Flat panel, very thin looking light. The LEDs allows the housing, the size of the housing to be reduced significantly. And that is a flat panel light. And that, I said before, was at the three locations, the two entrance driveways and by the loading space. The center one is the type of light that's proposed in the canopy light. That is actually set up recessed. It looks like it's extended, but it actually recesses up into the canopy itself. And then the third one to the right, those are building mounted lights. They're set up around the perimeter of the building itself. It helps illuminate the sidewalk around the perimeter of the building and also the sidewalk at the drive aisles themselves. All the lights are LED fixtures. And they're all a white light. They're 3,000 Kelvin. I don't know if anybody goes and buys lights now, LEDs, but that is the whiter light that you have. It's, I guess it would be similar to the light that we're standing in, the room we're We have...
Just to be clear, when you say the room we're standing in, you're referencing to the light, you're talking about the whiteness or the brightness?
The whiteness.
The whiteness only?
The whiteness only, not the brightness. Yeah, no, this is, this would be very bright for a parking lot and under the canopy. Now, some other things that we have is the proposed canopy itself, also the location of the canopy, and the location of the proposed building. The location of the proposed building does screen the view from any of the residents that are on Ridgewood Road. The building will actually screen the canopy from their view. The residents that are on Reese Avenue, they will be able to see the canopy itself, but the canopy is pulled further into the site than the current existing canopy. The existing canopy, I said before, is located 12 and a half feet, 12.8 feet from Milburn Avenue, and our proposed canopy is approximately 40 feet from Milburn Avenue. So we are pulling it further away from the residents themselves. Some other things that we have, our proposed canopy is located in the floodway. We did look, we did contact DEP and had discussions about it. And they would permit the canopy to be constructed in the floodway. It's not a structure that they would deny the application for.
Could you show us, please, where the canopy is and where it will be?
This is the existing canopy in this location. And then the proposed one sits basically bisects through the existing foundation. I know that it's not colored, but it is highlighted. That's the proposed canopy, and it's set to the right or through the foundation of the existing building.
I think you said it would not be visible to the residents on Ridgewood?
Reeves.
Reeves? I thought you said it would be visible from Reeve.
It would be visible from Reeves.
Reeve.
It would be.
Reeve.
Reeves?
Reeves.
If I'm mispronouncing, please correct me. Oh, Reeve, I'm sorry. Reeve Circle. Yeah. Yeah, Reeve Circle is almost in line with our Eastley boundary line. If you extended that, that's the intersection of Reeve Circle. Ridgewood, it is Ridgewood, correct?
Ridgewood Road is the other one. That's where I think you said it would not be visible.
That's correct. Ridgewood Road is at the intersection of Vauxhall and Milburn. And then the building itself will block the visibility of the canopy from that location.
On the wall mounted lights, there's eight wall mounted lights?
Yes.
And?
Two on each side.
Two on each side of the building?
Yes.
And then in addition to that, it looks like there's about 15 gooseneck lights on the signs? They're not on your plans. I guess somebody else will address that?
Somebody else said that's news to me, so I can't test the site to them.
Okay. But your foot candle levels, this does not account for those gooseneck lights?
The proposed parking space sizes are nine by 20 parking spaces. I believe the code is nine by 19, and we've created nine by 20 because the handicap parking space has to be 20 feet long. So we've created all the parking spaces across the front of the building to be 20 feet. In terms of the parking spaces, I didn't go out how the calculation was made, but the calculation in the code requires six parking spaces per thousand square feet. So if you take the building, the calculations comes out, the 11 parking spaces required
I know I must be, I'm being dense, but I see parking spaces one through eight, and then I see two spaces 10 and 11. For the life of me, I can't find number nine.
I couldn't find it.
Entrance.
I did say where it was.
Oh, okay.
It's in an alcohol spot.
Okay. Up above the tanks?
Yeah, I described along the eastern property.
Okay.
Which flat is that, three?
No, that's on sheet two.
I couldn't find it either.
Right here. Sheet spot nine, it's parallel.
Just to go back to your question about the gooseneck lighting, I just looked. It is shining on the sign itself. That is not going to affect the foot candles on the site.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, the gooseneck lights are shining on what sign?
The sign, the Chestnut Mark sign, the Chestnut Mark sign.
On the Milburn Avenue side?
On the...
I think there's...
The front of the building.
On the front, okay.
It looks like it's on the side.
Yeah, there's multiple.
There's an architectural plan, so we'll have our testifies back.
I was specifically looking at the...
I have no further questions for this witness.
Counsel?
I guess we should have gotten your appearance, Mr. Simon.
Good evening. Rob Simon from Harold Law here on behalf of Milburn Mall Holdings LLC, 2933 Vauxhall Road in Union, next door property. I have a bunch of questions for Mr. Halls. I don't know if other members of the public have questions?
Why don't you go first?
Let me go first, okay.
Milburn Mall Holding LLC, the adjacent property owner.
Correct.
If I may, for your honor, may I ask a few questions of his client?
You're going to ask a few questions of my client?
Yes. Just for the record.
No, he stated who his client is.
Right, I would like to know those uses on his client's site. And whether or not any of those uses are the same uses that are being proposed in this application.
I don't know why that's...
I don't know why that would be relevant.
Well, convenience store usage.
Why is that relevant?
Are you challenging the standing of my client to object to this application?
No, I'm getting to the record that it's anti-competitive, and that's the intent of this application's objective.
Are you claiming that because we are, do you understand we're property within 200 feet?
Yes, I understand.
And that we're on your list that you provided notice for?
Yes, I absolutely understand.
And yet you're making a claim that there's anti-competitive motivations here?
Well, I'm saying...
Is that your position for the record?
Part of my position, yes, is that at the new list, yes.
All right. Proceed with your question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Halls, good evening.
Mr. Halls, let's go back.
You started talking about variances. So, I want to be clear as to what the applicant is asking for in connection with this application. Now, you prepared the engineering plans for this application, correct, Mr. Halls?
Yes.
And you, as part of that work, and as a question to you, of you by Mr. Passata, you prepared the zoning table as well as notes and variances as reflected in sheet, two of seven, correct?
Seven.
And also, also one of seven, correct?
Yes, the may, I believe they're in those two locations.
Right. So, with regard to, let's talk about why we're before, why we are before this board as opposed to a planning board. You know the difference, because you're also a planner, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, why are we before the Board of Adjustment for this application, Mr. Halls?
Objection, that testimony is going to be provided by the planner. I think what my esteemed objecting attorney is trying to reference is the fact that this potentially be, absolutely, this potentially be a pre-existing conditional use, and maybe it's intensified use, and/or maybe it's just a D1 use variance in and of itself. That testimony will be provided by my planner, John McDonough, at a later date.
I think that this witness can answer that question.
Yeah, I'm just going based on what he put on his plans.
Yeah, the application and the plans.
Yep. Okay, so, again, Mr. Halls, with regard to why we are before this board as opposed to a planning board, I assume it's because the applicant contends that use variance relief is required, correct?
The proposed use is not permitted in the zone.
Okay, and when you say the proposed use, what is the proposed use that you're referring to, sir?
That is the gas station use on the property.
Okay, so the gas station use is not permitted in the zone, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that requires a D1 use variance, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And what else requires a D1 use variance in connection with this application?
The canopies are not permitted in the OR2 zone.
OR2 zone, where this property is located, correct?
Yeah, if I misspoke, I'm sorry. OR2 zone.
Yes. So that requires a D1 variance as well. What else require, that's two D1 variances, what else requires a D1 variance in connection with this application?
That would be that the proposed C use is with on the lot. It's all, excuse me, there's only one permitted use allowed on a piece of property we're proposing to.
Two principal uses on a lot, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so because you are only allowed one principal use per lot in the OR2 zone, and you're proposing two principal uses in the OR2 zone, namely, the gas station use and the convenience store use, that's two uses prohibited, and that's also requires D1 use variance relief, correct?
In the way the ordinance is written, that's the way it's stated. However, in my opinion, in the operation of the gas stations, gas stations and convenience stores operate as one use.
So is it your position for purposes of this application that this is one use?
I believe you'll hear that from the planner, but that's correct.
So, the convenience store, is that in and of itself permitted in this zone, the OR2
Honestly, I don't remember offhand. I'd have to look specifically at that. I'd have to look at it.
Okay. And, Mr. Halls, you stated in response to questions from Mr. Passata that you are familiar with the ordinances of the township in Milburn as well as the master plan, correct?
Yes, because I did review the ordinance and preparation of the site plan.
And are you familiar with an amendment to permitted uses in the OR2 zone that was enacted in the spring of 2019?
I'd have to look to see if I have that in my file.
Okay, so if I show you, I happen to have an extra copy, can I, Ms. Fraser, Mr. Chairman, can I mark this, just so I can show him?
Sure. O1?
O1? Dave, I'm going to show you what I've marked as O1 for identification. Why don't you take a minute and take a look at that? Matt, I'll give you one as well. Okay? So you've had a chance to review what I've marked as O1 for identification, which is ordinance number 2528-19, ordinance amending and supplementing the Township of Milburn Development Regulations and Ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you read on top of that a statement of purpose, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it talks about neither retail sales establishments nor eating and drinking establishments currently exist within the district, correct? States that?
Objection. These questions are related to planning questions only. Specifically, he's trying to allude to the intent and purpose of the zone plan. Such proofs should be left for the planner, not the engineer.
Mr. Chairman, this witness specifically stated in response of questioning by the applicant's attorney that he's reviewed the ordinance and the master plan, and he went as so far as to identify variances on his sheets of his engineering report. For both of those reasons, it is appropriate for me to ask these questions. I'm not asking him anything about positive and negative criteria as to proofs to establish variance relief. I'm just asking him for identification purposes that he's clearly...
I think that's appropriate.
Thank you. So, Mr. Halls, you see here in terms of statement and purpose, make clear, it says it makes clear, this is in March of 2019, just a few months ago, that retail service use shall not include establishments primarily engaged in sale of products or merchandise, including food or drink to the general public, correct?
The first thing in the statement of purpose says neither retail sales establishments nor eating and drinking establishments currently exist within the district. And then it goes on before, after that. It says that what you're describing is the retail sales shall not include establishments primarily engaged in sale of products and merchandise, including food and drink to the general public.
That's correct. And does the convenience store that you're proposing as part of this application intend to sell food and drink to the general public?
Yes, it would.
Does a review of that ordinance change your opinion as to whether a variance is required for the convenience store?
Yes, according to this, it would.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to the other than the convenience store, the gas station, the canopy, and the multiple uses on one lot, are there any other D1 variances that are required in connection with this application to your knowledge?
I don't believe so.
And is there any variances required regarding either the number of parking spaces or the location of parking spaces?
I don't believe so.
Is there a reason why there's a proposed convenience store in connection with this application as opposed to just the gas pumps?
The applicant, as I understand, this is the business they're in, they have, all their stores have both a convenience store and a gas, and this is what they're proposing to use of this property.
Okay, and when you say all their, all their stores, what are you referring to?
I'm referring to the other stores that I'm familiar with. There are other sites in New Jersey that I'm familiar with.
Okay, what sites are you familiar with where the applicant also operates a gas station and convenience store?
Well, I can tell you, I'm not sure that they operate, they operate the gas stations in Wayne. There's one on, they're proposing, they had a proposal Livingston, and they had a proposal in Montville.
Okay.
Livingston and Montville?
Montville.
Vale, Montvale.
Okay. I'll bite. What's going on with the application in Montvale? Has that been approved?
It's been approved.
And is that a gas station and convenience store?
Right now, it's a gas station and service station.
Okay, and where's that located, in Montvale?
Kendrick Mac Road. I don't even know what the cross street is.
Okay, no convenience store there, correct?
No, they're fully approved, and they've, they have a tenant in the service building, and I'm not sure why they're not building it at this point.
You're not sure why?
They have a tenant in the service garage, but they're fully approved for a gas station and convenience store. And I can't tell you why they're not building it at this point.
And what about the one in Livingston?
Livingston, they're, they decided to abandon the, their approval for the gas station and service station and, a gas station and convenience store, and they're going to reopen the service station.
Okay, and where's that project in Livingston located?
I think Springfield Avenue and...
Is Hillside Avenue?
No Springfield Avenue.
Hillside Avenue.
Hillside.
Hillside Avenue.
You're closer.
I'm closer, I don't know. I, if I think about it, I'll get the names. Hillside Avenue, I'll go along with that. I can't remember what the main drag is. All the times I was there for the testimony, I think I remember.
That's all right. What about Wayne?
Wayne, it's on the corner of Hamburg Turnpike and Alps Road. And that they have approval for the gas station and service, and a convenience store.
They have approval?
Yes. I will try to speak up, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, of the three, is Wayne up and running as a gas station and convenience store?
They are open as a gas station.
Okay, what about as a convenience store?
Not yet.
So, of the Wayne, Livingston, and Montvale projects, none of them are currently operating as both a gas station and convenience store, correct?
That's correct.
And you talked about these resolutions that were granted in connection with this property, correct? You testified to that a moment ago?
I did, yes.
Right. And did you do any investigations? You said you reviewed the ordinances in the master plan as to whether those resolutions led to any changes in the zoning ordinance or master plan that would support either a gas station or a convenience store use?
I don't remember if they did.
And what about even for a gasoline station canopy? There's been no change in the ordinance to permit that since those resolutions were...
I don't believe so. I don't recall that there was.
Thank you. And just, jumping around now, just a couple of technical questions. The access drive, you know, you talked about, Mr. Halls, the access drives on Vauxhall and Milburn Avenue moved as far away as possible from the intersections, correct?
That is correct.
And with regard to the driveway on, that leads to Milburn Avenue, how many feet away is that from the adjoining property?
It's probably 10 feet.
And do you know what the ordinance requirement is in Township of Milburn for a distance from a commercial driveway such as that to the nearest property?
I don't recall.
Did you recall whether variance or exception relief is required in connection with that condition?
I don't remember what one was.
And you heard Mr. Passata mentioning that about hours of operation, so your proposal is to have hours of operation between 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., correct, for both the service station and the convenience store?
Yes.
And that would be permitted, provided that the convenience store and the gas station were permitted use in a zone in the Township of Milburn, correct?
That is what the, I believe it's the gas, there's a section in the ordinance, I'd have to go back and review it, but I thought it was specifically about the gasoline service station operation.
Okay, and that's for a service station, that would be in a zone where it's permitted, correct? That would be the hours of operation.
I don't know if the ordinance talks about what, what, I'd have to review the specific section of the ordinance, because I don't know if it's saying that it's only in these zones or not. I know that it's saying gasoline operation is these many, what's the hours of operation?
Okay, that's fair. You mentioned about the property being in a floodway and in a floodplain. Do you know whether any of the operators' other properties are located in either a floodway or a floodplain, or even subject to a riparian buffer?
With the other site plans I mentioned? I don't remember. I know Wayne is not. I'm not sure Montvale is. I don't remember about the Livingston application.
And I see on the site plan, there's signs, it says Chestnut Mark. Is that a national chain, regional chain, or is that just a name that is made up for this particular user?
I believe that is the, the name of the stores that my client uses for their convenience stores. You'd have to ask them specifically, and if, maybe they want it to be a national chain, I don't know, but that's the one they gave us.
And with regard to the type of gas, you're, what are you selling? Regular unleaded premium diesel?
I believe that that's what they'd be having, yes.
And when you designed this site, and the particular ingress and egress positions and the location of the building and the location of the canopy, did you consult with Mr. Malz, Harold Malz, the traffic consultant for the project, prior to designing the site, or after?
I initially am the one that does the design of the site, prior to the traffic engineer being involved. He then reviews my plan, and because I do have, there's no license for a traffic engineer, there's no specific license for them, all covered under the same license. I have extensive experience in site design and traffic turning movements and designs, intersection design, so I have extensive experience in this. So I do know what the, what's the safe movements and looking for in terms of the design of the site.
Did you, with all that experience you had, did you create any type of traffic report or evaluation for this intersection prior to designing the site?
No, Mr. Malz.
But you didn't see that until after you designed this, right?
You have to be, refine your question.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't review Mr. Malz's traffic evaluation for the site until after you designed the site, correct?
No, but I did make site inspection before I designed the site, so I did observe the traffic movements in and around the site prior to preparing the site design.
Did you do any traffic counts prior to creating the site design?
Just my observations.
Okay, so, but you didn't do any counting? You didn't put anything down on paper in terms of traffic counts, peak hours, queuing?
No, I don't, I look at the queuing. I look at how the traffic movements cycle through. I did visit the site during peak hours, so I understand how the traffic movements occur. So that I do look into the design, and I know what type of impacts will be happening before I complete my design.
So, when did you make those observations, and how did you reduce those to paper, if you did?
I made a mental note, or I made a notate... Um, I made a mental note or I made a notation of, uh, the length of the queue lines, uh, that I observed at the site. And, uh, I looked at how this site, uh, uh, the traffic signal functions and the cycling of the, the sync.
Okay, I'm gonna ask, when, when did, on what date did you make those observations that you made your mental note of the queue lines?
It would've been sometime in, uh, July of two thousand seventeen.
July of twenty seventeen, um, so it was over two years ago, right?
That's correct.
And, um, on the, can you specify the date that you made that observation, July of twenty seventeen?
I'm not sure, I might have that been done.
Okay, and, and I'm presuming, uh, that school was not in session in July of twenty seventeen, correct?
I'm not looking in terms of, uh, the actual function of the, uh, of the intersection streets during peak hours. I'm looking for the general, uh, movements of the traffic and around the site and seeing if, uh, um, I witness, uh, specifically I'm looking for the queuing for the lanes and how much of the traffic that queues in the site.
So you didn't do any type of level of service evaluation during that time, correct?
I said I did not.
And so in terms of your mental note of the queue lines in July of twenty seventeen at an undetermined, uh, date, um, what was your, what were your observations in terms of the queuing on Milburn Avenue and on Vauxhall Road and, and, uh, at those particular intersections and by particular lane and how many cars were backed up? And for how long and where?
Well, in terms of Vauxhall Road, I specifically remember the, uh, Vauxhall Road does back up, um, queueing line does back up to the driveway.
When you say it backs up to, I'm, I'm sorry Dave, interrupting you. When you say it backs up to the driveway, just so the record's clear, um, how far past the driveway at that time that you, um, made your observation does the, the queuing go?
I don't remember that I, uh, specifically measured the, the limits of it, but I did know that, uh, note that the queuing lane of the traffic that's, uh, um, making a straight line, oh, let's see, it's, uh, it's coming through and they'd be able to both make a, uh, go straight and also make a right turn from the, uh, from the middle of the lane, that that, uh, did, uh, uh, come past our, our, back up our, our driveway. But I did also observe that after this, the traffic turned green, the, the light turned green, that the, uh, traffic movements cycled through the light.
And, and what time of day do you make this observation?
It was early in the morning.
And when you say early in the morning, how early?
Uh, between eight and nine.
Did you make an observation in the PM hour?
I did not.
And did you, based on your mental note from two and a half years ago, and I give you credit because I don't remember what I did this morning, um, what, um, how many seconds, uh, elapsed before, from, from the time that the driveway was impeded from making a right or a left turn to the time that, uh, there was available, um, space because the, the queuing dissipated?
I did not time it, I was only looking at the general, uh, movements of the, uh, the traffic through the intersection. And I was observing that the, the traffic, uh, moved through there. If I thought it was a, uh, um, a, a real issue that we had to deal with, I would've, uh, discussed that with my client.
Have you made any observations of the, the traffic or the, the queuing in that area since July of twenty seventeen?
I've only been through that intersection on weekends and, uh, uh, after hours, I can't tell you what it would be since that point.
That's fair. And then in terms of your, um, I'm gonna get back to the, some of your comments regarding, uh, traffic and circulation. Um, but just so I'm clear, the movements on the driveways for Milburn Avenue and Vauxhall Road, are those intended to be, um, full movements or restrictive movements? Meaning is someone able to leave the site, uh, at the Fox- Vauxhall Road driveway and make not just the right-hand turn but also make a, a left-hand turn?
Uh, we're not proposing any, uh, driveway restrictions at this time.
And, and also specifically on Milburn Avenue, if somebody's exiting this, the site on Milburn Avenue, you are permitting that driver to make both a right-hand turn and a left-hand turn as vehicles are coming in from both the right side and the left side, correct?
We're not proposing any driveway restrictions at this time.
And, and by the way, when, um, the fire occurred in, in two thousand nine, uh, that you testified to, uh, earlier, I forgot to ask you this, um, do you recall, or if you know, what the hours of operation for the gas station were at the time?
I don't know.
And the signage, um, for this site, is it gonna be, uh, lit throughout the night?
I'm being told no.
I'm asking you, I'm not asking these exams, I don't wanna cross-examine them.
I thought when the lights go out, the lights go out, and I thought that would include the signage because otherwise, because you've still got that pylon sign that people think the station's up.
And, um, with regard to getting back to your, your circulation observation, did you make any observations as to the impact, um, of traffic at, at this site or circulation from traffic that's coming, uh, from, from Franklin Street or from Reeve Circle?
I did not, those would be the traffic engineer will study.
And when you studied, when you did your evaluation to create your site design, did you consider, um, not just those impacts but also the impacts from the, uh, the Milburn Mall property next door?
Again, that's, uh, um, when I made my observation in Milburn Mall, uh, was, uh, I don't remember if there was any cars in the Milburn Mall at that point, so I don't know. I don't remember if there was any impacts in that.
And the, y- you talked about deli- deliveries, right? And you said deliveries from, uh, from Vauxhall Road for, I guess if, if you can go to your site plan that talks about the, um, the turning templates for, for the different vehicles?
Yeah, it's actually not, I don't have it on the, mounted, it's actually sheet, uh, five of seven on the site plan.
All right, with regard to sheet five of seven on the site plan, you testified earlier this evening, I believe, that the, uh, the WB fifty truck, is that the truck that's gonna be delivering the fuel?
That would be correct.
Right, so you, you stated that that's going to enter via Vauxhall Road, right? And you have a turning template, uh, for, for that vehicle, correct?
Yes.
And, by the way, do any of your, um, site plan sheets, and I might have missed it and I apologize, show, um, all the gas pumps being used on both sides? In other words, six cars with six fueling positions? Do you show that anywhere in any of your turning templates?
No.
And with regard to the, the WB fifty coming in on Vauxhall Road, how do you know, well, let me back up. It appears, and, and now, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm on page five of seven, showing the WB fifty truck turning path. Couple things, first of all, it shows the WB fifty, uh, to be able to make that turn, um, from the right-hand lane actually has to jut out to the left-hand lane before it crosses back over both lanes before entering the site on Vauxhall, that's accurate, correct?
That is how the truck would have to make the turn into the center.
And that, and that's assuming that there's not any type of queuing or backup, um, on the left-hand lane even as the right-hand lane was, uh, was a through movement?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the service provider, the, the applicant can, can control, uh, the delivery time of the trucks, um, and they would have it, uh, delivered off peak time.
How, how are they gonna control the delivery time of, of the trucks? How's the, how's that work?
Uh...
I mean, don't, don't those, those, uh, gas carriers, they're, they're not just delivering to this Exxon on the corner of Milburn and Vauxhall, they're delivering to, to many other gas stations, right?
No.
No, they just deliver to this, to this one gas station?
That is correct, that's how they operate. Uh, they, they dictate, uh, uh, how much fuel to be brought to the site. Uh, they'll bring it from the, uh, uh, from the, uh, I would say plane, but that's not the right word, uh...
Refinery.
Uh, it might be refinery, it's where the supply, there's a specific name for it, I'm just...
So you're saying that they come from, from, they, they fuel up and they go to one site and then they return?
That is correct.
And, um, how do you confer or, or guarantee that the fuel delivery truck is going to be making this particular movement exclusively and not come from a different direction either from Milburn Avenue making a right or left or making a left from Vauxhall Road?
Because the, each delivery driver is given a specific route on how to take, uh, take it to and from the site. And we can, and the applicant can actually control that, uh, for the site. This site, the truck being delivered is a multi-compartment tank, it has, uh, each of the individual fuels in that tank. And, uh, the tanks now are computerized, they exactly know what, how much fuel is in each tank. And they can tell the supplier exactly how much fuel that they need to go through. They don't specifically have to dip the tanks anymore to find out exactly what fuel is in there. It's, it's come to the point where they can actually specify the exact amount of fuel that they wanna deliver to and from the site.
Okay, and so based on the operator's other locations, um, how often is the, um, well, first of all, um, how many, how many gallons of gas do they anticipate pumping week?
With that, I can't answer you because the station's not open, uh, they're, they're gonna take a, uh, calculated guess when they open the site on what they're going to need, um, they will probably get deliveries, you know, I, I can't say. They'd like to get deliveries every day, but that's not gonna happen because the, uh, they're not gonna pump that much fuel. That's, everybody would like to be in that line of business who did that, but that station's not gonna pump that much fuel.
Right, and it, but...
Probably get it once a week.
But isn't every, um, service station that contracts with the WB fifty, uh, carrier gonna want to have their deliveries made during off-hours?
And they can regulate when that is.
And, um, in terms of your location of your loading area, that loading area is for, for what? For all deliveries to the, uh, convenience store?
That would be correct, all deliveries would have to be done during, uh, business hours because the, uh, so it would be done, uh, specifically it would be a single unit vehicle coming in.
Okay, and, and...
It could be a, uh, um, a beverage truck, it could be, uh, a bread truck, something like that.
Right, and, uh, um, same, same question as before but for the food, beverage or, or, uh, supply deliveries for the convenience store. Now you have to admit that those aren't coming just exclusively to the eighteen hundred and twenty square foot convenience store?
That is correct.
Okay, so how do, how do you guarantee that the, um, for example, the, I guess the SU truck turning path, that's what that's supposed to represent?
SU is single unit.
Single unit truck turning path?
That's correct.
Um, how can the operator guarantee that this is the exclusive, uh, path that, that each, each of the, uh, trucks are gonna take when they enter and they exit the site?
Um, they can try their best with the, those, uh, truck deliveries. Uh, they can regulate as best they can with the operators themselves. Uh, I know that, uh, they can, uh, if they find somebody that's making incorrect routes or whatever else that was not in a, in accordance with the approval, uh, they can, uh, discontinue with that driver and change, so, in some fashion, so. There's internal ways of doing it, I don't know the specific ways of how they do it, but they do, uh, have, uh, penalty phase at that point. They have a policing method that sets a penalty, policing that, that would be better.
And, um, how do, how do you know that they are only a single unit as opposed to, you know, WB forties or WB fifties that are, that are making a, uh, you know, any type of delivery during the week?
Only because the size of the store, the, the size of the store is very small, uh, in terms of convenience store size.
Right, but if the, um, if the Pepsi truck who's delivering to, you know, a hundred different, uh, retailers, you know, in the Essex County area, um, this may be one of their stops and that may, may be a WB forty in certain circumstances, right?
No, I don't know of any, uh, Pepsi trucks that are WB forty. That would be an independent cab from the, uh, uh, from the trailer, and I don't know that they get one.
And, and, and you have oddly the, uh, loading area being on the complete opposite side of the site as where the deliveries are going, namely to the convenience store. So the, so once the, uh, truck, the single unit truck parks, then it has to, um, carry or dolly their supplies past the driveway, around the gas pumps, across where people are coming in to get their gas on, on two lanes, through the drive aisle, through the parking spaces, and then ultimately to the, uh, convenience store, correct?
That is correct, so your, your, uh, explanation is, uh, extremely detailed. It's not as difficult as the way you're, uh, trying to profess it to be. Uh, the site is fairly level or cer- fairly flat, it'll be easier to move the material from one side to the other.
Certainly, um, when you design these, these sites, the loading areas are typically, uh, next to or, or nearby the convenience stores, correct?
You try to.
And is there a reason, there's something about this site that prevents the loading area from being placed so close or much closer to the, uh, convenience store?
Specifically, it's an irregularly shaped piece of property, it's, uh, you know, an, you know, an acute angle on the roadway. Um, it's almost triangular in shape on one side, um, you, you've got a lot of restrictions here to deal with and so it's an extremely irregularly shaped piece of property.
When, when you say ir- irregularly shaped, um, are you familiar with any other gas station, convenience stores in this area that have this type of irregular shape?
I go to one regularly, but it's not in this area.
I'm saying in, in this area, at, let's say even in Essex County, are you familiar with one?
Uh, no, I've done other sites that are extremely, uh, irregular like this and they, they function, uh, very well. A convenience store gas station, I've done a few that are irregularly shaped because of all the restrictions. Um, and this one specifically, um, you've got, not only you have the irregular shape, but you have the floodway, you have the floodplain, you have a lot of other restrictions.
You have riparian buffer, right? All those issues, right? And, and you've done, um, how long is it gonna take to, uh, to fill the, uh, the gas, um, tanks?
Josh, that's an operational question.
Do you know?
My client can answer it later.
If, if he knows.
Okay, it, it takes, uh, approximately ten minutes to fifteen minutes.
And during that time, are those WB fifties, are they idling? Right, they're not, you're not turning those off, right, diesel trucks?
You know, I don't know. I'm gonna guess that they have to be turned off, but I don't know.
And you've done no evaluation about, you know, like, what percentage of people, uh, go get, go get their gas and also go into the convenience store, right? You didn't do any of those evaluations, right?
No, I've read studies about it, but I have not done any evaluations.
Okay, so you don't know how many trips are anticipated, um, for this site on a weekly basis for the gas station and convenience store?
I did not do it, I do know that the users don't know studies, the operators don't.
Do you know what those op- what those studies revealed?
Uh, it's, uh, a lot more percentage of people than, uh, what you'd expect, uh, go to both, uh, the convenience store and the gas, uh, in terms of, is that, that, your question exactly how many people?
No, I wanna know how many people on a weekly basis are gonna be on this site.
Oh, that I don't know, that I don't have that in mind. I thought you were asking how many people use the convenience store and the gas pumps concurrently, they're at the same time.
Right, and, and, and you think that, or you're, you're told that those studies reveal that the percentage is high?
It's actually higher, yes, than you'd expect. It's actually higher, yes, than you'd expect.
And, and what is, what are those results, Mr. Halls?
About forty percent of the cars at the, in their stations that they operate go, uh, I believe, and I'd have to pull up the study again, but I believe it's almost forty percent. Uh, um, other people who pump the gas actually go into the convenience store.
What, what order do they go in?
I don't believe the study said which one they go in first.
The studies say how much time in total they spend on the site?
I don't recall that much.
And with regard to your, um, full movements, you're not, you're also not preventing, um, if I'm, if I'm a landscaper and I have a flatbed on the back with all my landscaping equipment, I'm not prevented from going into the site and going to get a cup of coffee and a sandwich, correct?
Um, no, you're not. We don't have any signage that says, uh, you know, no trucks, no cars and trailers or anything like that.
Right, and, and so where would, where would someone like that park?
They wouldn't. They would have to, they would block parking spaces or block the, uh, the pump island or something like that. It's not designed for that type of vehicle.
So it, it's not, so this site is not designed for any vehicle larger than a, a passenger vehicle for purposes of parking, correct?
For the purposes of parking and also the use of the pump. That's how, it's not, it's not designed for truck trailers to come in here and use the, uh, fueling positions either.
So if, well, if I'm a, if I'm a landscaper, uh, and I need to gas up my truck and I also wanna fill up my gas tanks because I have my weed whackers and, and, and my other, uh, equipment, um, I, I pull up to one of the, one of the pump islands and I, I, and I fill up, right?
You could.
Well, is there any prohibition if I'm coming down the road on Vauxhall and I need gas? Is there anything that prevents me from pulling into your site and going to get gas and filling up my gas tanks and going to get a cup of coffee?
No, you'd, uh, you'd block the entire pump island, but there's nothing restrictions for doing it.
And with regard to the, um, the parking spaces, you stated that, uh, eleven spaces are, are required and eleven spaces are provided, correct?
Yes.
Did you do any type of independent evaluation through, uh, ITE, uh, tenth edition, or not tenth edition, fourth edition for parking or otherwise to determine the appropriate number of spaces, um, for, for this particular site?
No, we didn't use that parking, we were using the, uh, parking requirements of the town.
And do you, do you have any independent knowledge as to whether the parking requirements for the town are adequate for this particular use?
Uh, my personal opinion?
No, not, well, I'm not, I'm asking your personal opinion, I'm asking-
Oh, my professional opinion.
Your professional opinion, yes, sorry. I apologize.
I know, that's right.
You didn't do any studies to make the determination, correct?
No, it's, uh, their, their proposed parking did not, uh, look out to me as being abnormal from any other ordinances or any other.
Okay, and, and actually, uh, talking about sticking out, it does look like, uh, for the single unit truck turning path, it looks like that the, um, that the truck would clip at least, uh, one of the parking spaces, parking space number ten. It's all the way in the back, correct? As, for your turning template? Yeah, right here. See, got a little clip right there. You just hit my car. I parked there. Right?
Um, yes, it goes across the, uh, that space.
Right, and then with regard to spaces, I'm gonna call them, I think you numbered them actually, I'm sorry, nine, nine, ten.
That was not here. It's one through eight.
Like nine, nine, ten, eleven, right? So nine, ten, and eleven are, are the parallel space, um, in the back as well as the two spaces next to the, uh, the loading area, correct? So if, if I, um, if I wanna go in and go get, get a, uh, a cup of coffee and a Danish in the morning, um, I can park in one of those spaces, correct?
You could. We would anticipate those would be employee parking only because, uh, they're furthest away from the convenience store.
And are, are those gonna be designated as employee-only parking spaces?
We're not proposing that, but we could if the board chose to require it.
And how many employees are you proposing for this site?
I know that they would have one at the, uh, the pump island and, uh-
That's in the kiosk?
In the kiosk, yes. And, uh, because New Jersey still requires, you know,
Right.
Have some pump your gas.
Right.
And, uh, one to two employees inside.
And, um, has there been a determination in terms of shifts for those employees?
No, not that I know of.
Right, but they're not gonna be working from, from six AM to eleven PM, right?
I don't know.
Okay, so let's assume for the moment that, um, we are decent employers and we are not going to have employees. The three employees working from six AM to eleven PM straight, and there's gonna be other people working. Um, if those employees are working, the three employees that are parked in those three spaces and three new employees come to, uh, take over for them, where are they parking? Because they're still, one's gonna still be working while the others are coming to the site to, uh, to relieve them. I'm just trying to understand how it's gonna work.
Well, if, uh, if your scenario was correct, um, they would, uh, just rotate the parking spaces probably.
Have you made an evaluation as how, as to how that's gonna happen?
No, that's not something that, that would be an internal, uh, internal condition with the operator.
And, and you haven't done any type of, uh, evaluation as to what happens where there are two deliveries that are happening at the site at the same time, whether it's fuel and food or milk and coffee drinks or otherwise? Like if, if there's more than one delivery that's happening on the site at the same time and there's only one loading area?
I would, uh, assume that the operator can control it.
And during the time, this, this ten, fifteen minutes that the fuel truck is unloading its fuel, um, it's, it's blocking the, the drive aisle in that location, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so that, and I'm sorry, Dave, that's, is that gonna be, that's gonna be along the Milburn Avenue side, right?
That is correct.
Right, so during that ten, fifteen minute period, uh, no vehicle's gonna be able to enter or exit uh, on, on the Milburn, in the Milburn Avenue driveway, correct? Or so it appears to me.
I don't anticipate you being able to use the Milburn Avenue driveway, but it's possible you might be able to.
And have you done any type of eval, of evaluation in terms of onsite circulation on, um, the, uh, the ability to exit the site, either making a right or a left on Vauxhall and, or Milburn Avenue and, and the type of wait times that are gonna be involved before making those turns?
The traffic engineer.
So you, you, you didn't make any of those, uh, independent evaluations, right? And, and, and is there gonna be, uh, potentially, and what are the peak periods actually for this, for this site?
In terms of the peak hour?
Mm-hmm, yes.
We'd have to ask the traffic engineer.
You didn't do any gap studies, correct? That's what I meant to ask you.
Still don't, still have to, traffic engineer. You didn't ask me that earlier.
Okay, um, did you review any type of police reports or conduct any accident evaluations for this busy intersection?
I know we have received comments from the police department. They don't have any, uh, uh, comments on the application, but I didn't research it.
Do you know how many times, um, they're expecting deliveries on a daily basis?
I don't believe that deliveries are on a daily basis, but you'd have to ask the operator.
And, um, with regard to, you, you said you were gonna provide an environmental impact statement before the next meeting. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna reserve my right to ask questions of the, uh, the engineer based on the review of that. But offhand, do you know what the status is with any type of DEP permitting, uh, for this site?
Well, we have not made an application yet for flood hazard area permits.
Um, do you know what's going on in terms of, uh, ongoing monitoring, uh, regarding the, uh, uh, monitoring wells for this property?
I know that there's, uh, an LSRP that, uh, handles that case, but, uh, again, you'd have to ask the-
What, what is that, LSRP? What is that?
Uh, it's a licensed, uh, site remediation professional. Uh, DEP gave the, uh, I don't know, ten years ago now, um, they, uh, gave the, uh, monitoring and permitting, uh, to licensed individuals instead of, uh, because there was such a backlog of the state taking care of the operations, that they licensed, uh, site remediation professionals to do the, uh, um, site permitting, remove, remove, uh, review of the data, uh, of the environmental conditions on the property and then actually going through and issuing the, the necessary remediation.
Would that include inspection of the tanks and assuring the quality of the tanks themselves?
Actually, if I may, there is a hearing before DEP in January regarding the quality of the tanks and the status of the tanks.
Thank you.
Um, is there, are you aware of whether there's a remedial action work plan that's been submitted for this site?
I don't know.
And with regard to the outdoor operations, is there gonna be any, uh, sales of oil or, um, wiper fluid or anything like that on the outside? You don't know, I don't wanna make a guess.
I'm thinking, I, I mean, I don't know.
You mean outdoor display?
Yeah, well, display for sale, yes.
Right.
I don't know if there's, that's inside the kiosk or not, so I can't answer the question.
And you don't know what, what type of, uh, merchandise food is gonna be sold inside the eighteen hundred and twenty square foot, uh, convenience store?
I do not.
So you don't know if there's a, a kitchen and they're gonna be baking and cooking or anything like that?
I don't know.
Okay, and what about, um, let's see, vacuums or, uh, air pumps that you typically see at a gas station? Are those going to be located anywhere on site?
We do not, we're not proposing any.
Try to stay away from questions I don't think you know the answer to. Based on, um, after you reviewed Mr. Malts's report and after you designed the site, did he make any changes to your design, Mr. Halls?
He did not. He came up and, uh, uh, said that the driveway movements were going to be, uh, were going to function.
And have you done any type of, uh, pedestrian evaluation? Um, of those who, uh, walk on the sidewalk adjacent to the site and how ingress and egress is gonna affect those pedestrian activities?
I'm not quite sure, uh, uh, what type of pedestrian, uh, studies I would do. I mean, if there's this adequate sidewalk area for pedestrians to move, the driveways are designed for a continuous sidewalk across the entrance to the driveway. Um, there's free movement into the site with the sidewalk from both, uh, Vauxhall Road and from Milburn Avenue. Um, so that there's, uh, pedestrian-wise, the site is designed for the street movement of pedestrians.
Okay, now I was just curious, 'cause I, I do know there's a nursery school through, uh, through, uh, Congration, I guess, this temple in Israel across the street. So, but you haven't done any type of evaluation of that, correct? And, um, what about for, uh, for snow removal? How's that gonna work?
Well, the snow removal, um, presently would, uh, for smaller storms, they'd, uh, just push in, uh, snow towards, uh, uh, the Brookside where we have adequate area for, uh, the snow to pile. Uh, once it gets to a certain level, they'd have to, uh, truck it out of the snow.
And then are you, um, asking for a variance or exception, uh, for your, your average and your maximum foot candle measurements?
Uh, we are. The, uh, maximum foot candle level for the, uh, maybe I didn't mention that, but the average football, um, the maximum foot candle level, uh, the ordinance says one, uh, half a, half a foot candle for one is supposed to be the foot candle level in the parking lot.
Right, and what are you proposing?
We're proposing, uh, a maximum of three point. A maximum for the parking area of three point nine seven and a maximum on the, the canopy of forty point seven two.
Okay, so that's, that's well in excess of the, uh, the average foot candle for the, uh, for the property, correct?
That is correct. I mean, I don't believe the ordinance is actually written, uh, with the intention of, I believe it was probably looking for a minimum of zero point five to one foot candle. Uh, it would be impossible for you to, uh, light the parking lot with an average of half a foot candle. Uh, that wouldn't be physically possible, and it wouldn't be physically possible to light the parking lot for one foot candle. Uh, because underneath the tolls, the foot candle level is, uh, eight to ten foot candle because the light fixture is there. And, uh, by the time you distribute the light around the, the site, uh, you, it would be so dim that you couldn't, uh, physically have a sudden light with a half a foot candle and one foot candle. So I believe that the ordinance was intended to say average instead of, uh-
Maximum? Okay, so in term, but in terms of your average foot candle measurement, you are exceeding, uh, that requirement, oh, way over four or five folds, correct?
Uh, that is correct. Uh, we were, uh, um, our average is, uh, almost four foot candles. Um, and that is because, uh, under the lights, uh, in the, uh, we can't be distributing lighting from the edge of the canopy. That we would exceed that limit.
And how many, um, monitoring wells are within a hundred and fifty feet of this gas station, if you know?
That I don't know.
And, and you stated that the, um, the building elevation-wise is gonna be higher than the, uh, than the flood plain?
Yes, the first floor is higher than the, um, floor.
By how much? If you know?
The first floor is elevation ninety-six and the flood elevation is ninety-five point seven. Uh, so we're, uh, a little bit higher than the hundred-year flood. Um, the DEP flood regulations require it to be one foot above that.
Right.
So the regulated DEP flood is ninety-six point, uh, seven, and then you'd have to add one foot above that, so you'd have to be ninety-seven point seven.
But you're not that.
We're not. We're proposing the first floor at ninety-six, so the, uh, I make it in the terminology, it's either wet proof or dry proof. Um, I, uh, I forget which one's which. But, uh, we are, we have to, basically, we have to put, uh, special doors in and special floodproofing measures around the, um, um, the openings to the building.
Do you need, do you need a type of relief, uh, for, um, for not meeting those elevation requirements?
Uh, no, uh, we do have to, as part of our permitting process with the incident.
All right, I'm gonna save most of my, uh, other questions for the traffic consultant other than obviously reserving my right to ask questions based on the environmental impact statement that has been, um, that's, the applicant has stated that they're going to be, uh, be providing. So, uh, with that, I have no further questions for Mr. Halls at this time. Thank you for your patience.
We have, uh, seventeen minutes before we're finished for the night. Board members, you have any questions of this witness? I have one, at least one.
Mr. Halls, you'll be coming back, correct?
I was hoping not to, but I.
I think you will be.
Well, we're, you'll have to, because I don't, my guess is, we're not gonna finish with you tonight.
I'm sorry.
On questions, but, uh, he- here's my question. Uh, a, um, truck comes in, I'm gonna say a Pepsi truck comes in. Your lo- as I understand it, your loading area is in the extreme south westerly corner of the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
Now, how does the driver or the delivery person get from there to the store?
Uh, li- literally, they'd, uh, they would unload their, uh, their product, they would bring it around, uh.
Well, you say bring it around, how?
They'd, uh, on a, uh,
Handcar.
Hand truck of some type. They'd bring the material down around the, uh, uh, on the southerly side of the canopy. There's a handicap parking space, that's where the, uh, uh, the, the parking area is flush curb. And then they'd come, uh, and, uh, enter the sidewalk area.
And that requires that individual to go right past the entrance and exit?
Uh, that is correct.
Any other questions from board members?
Is there any electric, uh, charging on this gas?
No, we do not have it.
I'm sorry, what was that question?
Electric car charging.
Electric, electrical charging at the station.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
Mr. Chairman, your question prompted one more question.
Okay.
That they asked. Um, with regard to Mr. Steinberg's question about loading and unloading the Pepsi truck. The Pepsi truck loads into the loading area, right, Mr. Halls?
Yes.
Um, and the driver comes out. Is the driver usually by himself or herself?
I don't drive a Pepsi trucks, I don't know.
Okay, I thought maybe, you know, you might have been related to somebody at one time or did? So, with, but with regard to those, those deliveries, um, when they come out, isn't there occasionally, something that I've seen where they, to get the, uh, product or merchandise to bring into the store, they're not necessarily, um, lifting the, um, the back of the truck to get to that. It sometimes comes off the side, right?
That is correct. It could come off of both sides of the truck, it could come off the back.
Right, and so, coming off both sides of the truck, um, based on where this, this truck is gonna be parked, um, there, is there ability to go to the right side of the truck to get the merchandise or, or product?
I believe that the loading area will be able to be utilized by, uh, any type of, uh, truck or vehicle, whether it's a Pepsi truck or, uh, or if it's a bread truck or something else.
You didn't answer, you didn't answer my question.
Well, I'm going, I'm getting there. I may be convoluted in my answer, but.
That's all right.
The, the loading area, I can't foresee exactly how they're going to, uh, that truck driver may have to know what side of, uh, his, uh, his delivery is gonna be from. If your example is a Pepsi truck, you might have to know it's on the right-hand side and he might know it's in the right rear. He will have to make sure he pulls his truck in forward. If it's the other way around, uh, where he knows it's in the, uh, on the other side, he may have to back his truck in. But in either case, I believe that there's adequate room for the, uh, truck to be able to stop and, and unload his deliveries.
Okay, so whether he goes front in or, or he backs in, um, if there's a car parked in one of those parkings, in the parking spaces closest to the loading area, they're not gonna, he's not gonna be able to utilize that side, right?
Well, he, he still may have enough room to load it on the, uh, uh, loading area. Uh, the cars don't park right up to the edge of the space. Uh, generally, you, uh, the cars are more towards the center or the one side or the other. So, I mean, I, I anticipate that the truck would still be able to unload its, uh, uh, material from the truck.
And if you're, um, unloading from, from the back, um, you're doing that in an area where cars may be driving in that area to go around the, uh, the pump queue, correct? Secure U E U E, right?
Uh, and it's possible cars could circulate around the aisle while you're making the, uh, while the deliveries are being made.
Right, and actually, uh, and potentially clipping that, that loading area, correct?
No.
No?
Oh, I'm glad that you raised that question because you've now, uh, triggered a question in my mind.
Your turn.
How does that truck get in, get out? If the truck goes in face forward, how does it get out of there?
If the truck goes in face forward, it would back out towards the driveway and then circulate around the.
Back out toward
Towards the.
The driveway and across the lane of cars that are at the gas pumps?
No, it would just back out along the edge of the curb line. There's adequate room for the truck to back out of the space and cir- and then it would pull forward between the, uh, uh, the trash area and the, uh, the pump aisle. And that, that's shown on sheet, uh, seven shows the circulation. Uh, that's not really, uh, sheet, uh, five is.
Five of seven.
Oh, five of seven. It actually doesn't show that.
It does, it's actually, if you hold the page more.
So, here.
Oh, that, that, that.
And then he's coming here. Backing up and going up there.
Okay. Any other questions from board members before I ask, we've got ten minutes left? Is there anyone in the audience that has questions for this witness of some sort? Did I miss somebody up here? Go ahead.
So from Vauxhall Road, you're able to turn left as well as right?
A single unit vehicle would be able to turn in. They would have to make a similar movement as the, uh, the truck, the trailer on, uh, the WV fifty. They would have to make a wider turn to get into the entrance to the driveway, but you would be able to make the turn.
So if I'm coming from Milburn Ave., I make a right on Vauxhall, there's generally a lot of traffic coming in on the other side. I'm having a hard time making that left already, going to the mall, that strip mall. So if I have to make that another turn to get to the gas station, it's, it's very difficult.
I don't need to, I, I don't understand which way you're going.
So, let's say I'm coming down Milburn Avenue
And where?
From downtown.
This is.
No, the other way.
The other way.
Coming up, okay.
I'm coming up and then I make a right onto Vauxhall.
Right out through Vauxhall.
Get into the driveway?
Yeah.
If you came up, uh, Milburn Avenue and you wanna go towards that, you're not going to make a left out of Vauxhall and make a left into the site.
You mean, right?
But I'm, I'm committed on Vauxhall. Let's say I have to go to Newark Airport. I'm not gonna go to Milburn Avenue, I, I just wanna go to Vauxhall.
Yeah, I'm, I'm anticipating it'd be difficult for you to stop on Vauxhall Road and make a left-hand turn, but you'd have to listen to the traffic engineer. Those movements, I would anticipate you'd be on Milburn Avenue, you'd travel, uh, easterly to the entrance driveway on that section of the site. You'd, uh, uh, fill up gas and then if, uh, the traffic on, uh, Vauxhall Road was backed up, I would anticipate you would turn around on site, come up to Milburn Avenue, make a left-hand turn across and come through again.
Well, how would a first-time, uh, y- user would ever know that that's the route that, will there be some signs? Let's say I have a visitor in my house and they stop there to get gas, will there be some sign?
No, prob- probably not. The, these are, when you have these small sites like this and, uh, there's, uh, next to a traffic intersection, if you're the first-time user, you may find that there's, uh, inconvenience in terms of, uh, you know, turning lanes or across, how you, uh, enter and exit out of the site. And then I just know, have it, how I do it on sites I'm unfamiliar with, you may decide, you know what, that's just too much traffic and you turn around on the site and go to the other driveway. It's the second time around, after you've been there once, you understand how you utilize the site and that's what you do.
Well, we're gonna start with questions from the audience. If you have a que- now, just let me explain this to you. For questions, you do not have to be sworn. You come to the microphone, you give your name, your address, and you ask your question. No comments, no statements. Come forward. Name and address.
Hi, Merrily Reecepek, ninety-one Whittingham.
Spell your name.
Merrily, M-E-R-R-I-L-Y.
M-E-R-R-I-L-Y.
Correct. Reecepek, R-I-E-S-E-B-E-C-K, ninety-one Whittingham Terrace, Milburn. I have several questions. Most of my questions have already been answered by, already asked, but I have a couple of quick ones. Is there any signage on the convenience store? If so, where is it? And is it lit?
There is signage on the convenience store. I do know that there's, uh, a sign on, uh, facing the, uh, the pump aisle. And I know that there's another sign, but which side of the building is on?
I, I wanted to know if it was facing.
I think the signs on the building are on the architect's plans.
Okay.
You're, you're gonna have an architect come and testify.
Okay, uh, will there be, I believe, uh, it was said that there will be food prep in the convenience store? Will there be seating in the convenience store?
I don't, you'll have to ask the architect.
Okay, will the convenience store process money orders or money grams?
I don't know.
Intention to sell beer?
I don't know.
Will there be any security for this convenience store?
I don't know.
Um, you just pointed out a, um, handicap spot. Is that a van-accessible handicap, handicap spot or just a spot marked?
No, no, the, uh, uh, by the ADA regulations, the first parking spot at least has to be, uh, a van-accessible parking spot, so it's van-accessible.
And where is it in relation to the entrance to the convenience store?
Uh, the entrance is, uh, right in the center of the convenience store. It's, uh, approximately, uh, fifteen feet from the entrance.
And if the building is elevated, uh, you said it was elevated, is there a entrance, handicap entrance, a ramp or something?
There, there's a ramp leading up to it. It's all barrier-free.
All right, I'll save my other questions, 'cause I think other people have questions. Thank you.
Next, next questioner. Name and address.
Anne Rosenfall, twenty-five Reeves Circle, fifty-seven years. I wanted to know, have you ever come through this intersection or do you know anything about Milburn itself? The traffic in that area, or have you done a study? Have you sat around to see what the traffic on Vauxhall Road is like, what Milburn Avenue is like? Have you done any studies on that?
That's the traffic engineer, he did those.
All right, do you know anything about Milburn?
I've been here many times, I've been.
Really?
Many times.
Really?
I've come here for dinner, I've come here for the flight, you know, for the better.
And in that area of Milburn that we're talking about, have you had any kind of time to spend time in that area? Are you aware that it is predominantly more residential than it is commercial?
I've been in the area and I've made observations of the area.
Okay. Uh, I would say that you haven't been there to see that this is not a busy.
You've answered a question.
No comments at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, you have two minutes left. Do I have to stop shop at your hour?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
You have two minutes left.
There's only two minutes left.
Do I have to stop shop at your hour?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna stop you at eleven.
I, I want to be thorough, I have many questions. Am I gonna get another chance next meeting to ask him?
Yes, well, we'll contend your questions next week.
You'll have, you'll have plenty of options. He'll be back.
I have just two minutes.
You have a quick one, all right. Name and address.
Hi, Alex Moba, seventeen Reeves Circle.
Did you spell your last name?
M-O-A-B-A. Uh, is, is the site currently classified as being contaminated by the NJDEP?
I don't know.
You don't know?
No, I don't.
Oh, okay, uh.
That's a, that's an envi- you're asking an environmental question in terms of, with the LSRP, which I mentioned before. He would know what I meant. I don't know what the classification of the, of the situation, if it's under a, uh, current cleanup.
Okay. Are you, can you clarify, are you proposing to reuse the existing underground storage tanks at the site?
At the present time, we are proposing to reuse the existing underground storage.
Okay, and can you clarify how old those are?
I, uh, I may be incorrect, but I believe they were installed around nineteen ninety.
Okay. Why does this, why does the site need to be lit up like a football stadium?
Well, it does need to be lit up and if you go to your, uh, parking lots where you, uh, when you go to a business, uh, any type of business you're going to at night, you wanna be able to freely see when you get in and out of your car. If you drop your keys in the ground, if there's something else that's going on, you wanna be able to see safely that there's no one lurking around your car. There's nothing else, uh, you know, in the, in traffic area. So you have to be able to see, uh, on the site. Under the gasoline, uh, station, it has to be lit up. You have an operator that's working, uh, and it's, you need it for safety reasons. So you, that's why we, we increase the lighting under the canopies. You need it to be bright enough for the attendant to be able to see. He's gotta be able to see the credit card, uh, uh, statements, the, uh, the receipts, he's gotta be able to do operate. He's, he's pushing buttons and other things on the pumps that we're not allowed to touch in New Jersey, uh, that, uh, you know, none of us are capable of doing.
Sure.
But anyway, uh, and he's, uh, gotta operate the, the, uh, pumps and.
Yeah, I, I hear you, I hear you.
Also want it for the customers, so they can come in and see the operator and operate the system.
Okay, could you clarify what lights would be turned off after eleven PM when the facility closes?
Uh, as I understand it right now, it would be all the canopy lights, it would be all the signage, it would be the site lights. Uh, we would have to come back and specifically, uh, look at what we would leave on in terms of security. I don't have an answer to that.
Okay, uh, is the proposed new sign the same height as the existing sign?
The exact same sign, same existing sign, it would be relocated, it would be relocated.
Okay, and then the, the same question for the height of the canopy?
Uh, well, I know with the clearance on the canopy, it'd have to be, uh, thirteen and a half feet, uh, and that specifically, so it can pass the, uh, uh, traffic area. It's the same height, you can use on the highways on highway, except, uh, that, uh, that requires, I can't see the same.
But in, in terms of the existing canopy versus the new proposed canopy, would those be the same height?
They would be all the same. It's all, relatively the same.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, rather than ask for any more questions, I'm going to terminate the proceeding. Eileen, when is the next date that these folks can come back? And this witness needs to come back because there are other people who have, in the audience, who have significant questions for him. I see a lot of heads nodding.
And Board Chairman, I'd also like to have the opportunity to redirect this witness.
Pardon me?
I'd also like the opportunity to.
Yes, you'll have the opportunity to redirect.
You'll have the opportunity for redirect. I'm sorry, say it again.
If you take December second, two ca- two cases tonight were already carried to December second. Is the sixteenth wide open at this point?
Yes.
You're probably better off.
Sixteen, yes, and could we also carry notice?
I have a, uh, I have a hearing.
I already have a hearing in, um, Montclair on December sixteenth that's been carried a number of times to that specific date. Um, so I have a conflict and I cannot be here this evening, uh, that evening, and obviously I'd like to continue to participate. So I guess initially would ask if there's another date, um.
We haven't set our dates yet for.
For the, for the calendar year twenty twenty.
Calendar year twenty twenty.
Well, I, I certainly don't have any, uh, objection, I've done this in the past, as Ms. Frazier knows, to allow the applicant to continue, uh, without me being present on December sixteenth, provided that I be allowed to come back at some future date to cross-examine whatever witnesses have devised at that time.
Um, Joe, how many additional hearings do you think this case?
I have no idea.
No idea at this point.
Because the, the applicant's attorney said that a study on the viability of the tanks is being conducted in January. So we would obviously need to have that result before we could make any decision, right?
No, that's the. If I may, the study has already been done, it's the actual hearing itself will be in January, the, the study of the tanks.
It's a question of, are they gonna be able to use the existing tanks or are they gonna have to install new tanks?
That's not, that's.
That's not us, that's outside our.
Yeah.
The DEP question.
I have a question. Wasn't there a discussion that the board would hire a, a traffic consultant?
We might.
Well, we may.
We may.
You know, we probably wanna bring our planner in, but, you know, the board can bring in whatever professionals it chooses to bring in.
And we'll, we'll discuss that.
So.
Okay, so.
Prior to this, this, we're gonna carry it to December sixteen, but just a reminder.
We're gonna carry this matter till December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM in this hearing room. Till December sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM in this hearing room, at the municipal building on Milburn Avenue. Now, I anticipate that we're going to do the same thing then that we did tonight. And that is take care of the residentials, get them out of the way first. We don't know at this point how many there are going to be on December sixteenth, but we'll be in touch.
Great.
And my suggestion to you is the sooner you get us an EIS and your traffic report, the better.
Will do.
Okay.
Thank you all very much for your attention tonight and we'll see you back here on December sixteenth.
Thank you.
Yes.
I noticed that there is a sign on retail stores downtown.
In the, in the hallway, please.
The meeting's not over, please, Sophie, just exit the room.
In the hallway, please.
I don't want to extend this any, any longer than I, than my comment. I noticed that there is a sign on a retail shop downtown that says Garden State Ham.
Garden State what?
H E M P. And I've had, had a lot of phone calls over the past several days about people who are very concerned, worried and upset to see that and wonder how it got there.
Is it a retail sale? Does it require a site plan? Maybe it is. Sell them across the street at Greenham.
What do, what does, how do people object to it? I mean, that's what they're asking me and I don't have an answer.
And I can't participate in this discussion because I'm on the other side, on behalf of the law firm, not on this matter, but.
I'm just asking on behalf of the people who have called me and asked me the question and said, how did they get through the zoning? How did you get through the planning board?
I think the answer is they were hired in a turn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second? Well, in favor. The, the two cases that you set out. The one, one was approved. The one on, oh, I'm sorry, maybe both.
I thought they were both approved. They were both approved. Yeah, yeah, yeah.